I'll give you one minute and I'll start the meeting. Should be here, but. Good morning and welcome to the board, oh geez, the Board of Supervisors. Can't remember who I am. County Planning Commissioners Meeting, November 6, 2019. I call for roll call. Yeah, yeah. Okay, roll call? Oh, she's having a problem with the computer, okay. I can't hear either. Can't read, I can't hear. I turned 75 on Saturday and I didn't get any presents.
Here, aren't ya?
May we see him happy birthday?
No.
This is Chair, I'd like to, uh, kind of, comment.
We will take a 10-minute break. That was my moment of glory. I'm the Chair, I can change anything. I have a God complex today. I'll give you two minutes. Put your zipper up. Good morning again. We will reconvene the Planning Commission meeting of November 6, 2019, and we will start with roll call.
Here. Elliot is absent. Elliot?
Here.
Yes?
Here.
Here.
Pearson is absent. Iden are?
Here.
Okay, please stand and join me in the salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the public comment time. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the items come up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited by the direction of the Chair, that's me for today. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony is a public hearing, items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphones, get your name and address for the record, and please turn off all of these things, airplane mode, so we don't hear it ringing. So, any members of the public would like to address the Planning Commission on anything not appearing on the agenda, you can come forward at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public comment time and move on to the first timed item. It's item 3A. Special use permit and final site plan for PSP 19-057. Categorical exemption and conditional approval of a special use permit number PSP 19-057 to allow establishment of a contractor's storage yard, a 1.2-acre portion of a 16-acre parcel in an AE20 agricultural zone, 20-acre minimum zone. The site is located one mile west of the intersection of Avenue 200 and State Route 65 in Strathmore. The contact for this is Aaron.
Chairman Whitlatch, Planning Commissioners, before you today is special use permit number 19-057 for Soto Valmonte. The project is located east of Plainview.
One, one second, please. I need to recuse myself, so.
Okay. Through the Chair, let the record reflect that Commissioner Gil Agarila recused himself.
Okay.
Alright, so the, these are the arrow in the existing zoning map. You can see it's in the AE20 zone, AE40 zone, sorry. Here's a site plan of the contractor's storage yard. Here's a hearing notification. All properties noticed within 300 feet. With that, that completes staff's presentation, and we'll be looking for a request to approve the project with categorical exemption and for the special use permit.
At this time, I will open the public hearing, and anyone who wishes to testify on this item, would you please come forward and give your name and address for the record, please? So if anyone will, interested in testifying for or against this project. Seeing none, I will close the public testimony and go to my fellow commissioners for a yay or nay, so.
This looks like it's just to bring it into compliance, from what I can see here on the staff report, right?
That is correct.
How long, did it say how long it was? I missed that. How long has it been in operation?
I'm uncertain, but it's been there for, for a while.
A while?
Yeah.
The applicant here or no?
Yeah, right there.
It's pretty straightforward, so someone will make a motion. There's no further comments from my fellow commissioners.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations Sections 15301, Class 1 pertaining to existing facilities and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 19-057.
Here, has someone a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll call for the vote. It passes 4-0, so moving on to the next item, and Gil?
Hey, it's popping up on yours.
I won't be so quick on the trigger next time. Moving on to item 3B, it's a special use permit number PSP 19-061. It's a categorical exemption and conditional use, conditional approval of special use permit number PSP 19-061 to allow an agricultural service establishment on three acres of a five-acre parcel in AE20 zone. The site is located on the south side of Avenue 196, approximately half a mile east of Plainville, and our contact is Aaron.
Yes, Chairman Whitlatch, it seems we're having some difficulty here, so as suggested earlier by staff, we will do this a little bit old-school. I will read the project overview, and if you have any questions, I am here to answer them. This is a categorical exemption and conditional approval of a special use permit PSP 19-061, requested by property owner Refugio Avalos to allow an agricultural service establishment on three acres of a five-acre parcel in the AE20 zone, located at 20111 Avenue 196, Strathmore, California, on the south side of Avenue 196. The history is this parcel was legally created by parcel map number 714. There was a code violation on the subject property for operating an agricultural welding shop without a special use permit. They came in, or are seeking to come into compliance. They went to Project Review Committee on July 25, 2019, and were suggested to submit a use permit, and that is before you today. The subject site is zoned AE20, which with a special use permit would allow the agricultural welding operation. And this is primarily for trailers and tractors. The days of operation would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 4:30, and there are a total of 10 gravel parking spaces for businesses and private parking, and 15 gravel parking spaces for equipment. There are two employees, not including the owner themselves. The proposed area of usage is three acres of a five-acre parcel, and they have direct access from Avenue 196 for traffic. There is an estimated 12 trips per day, which does not include an estimated five deliveries a week. The site is not under the Williamson Act. That would conclude staff's presentation, and we would request approval of a categorical exemption and conditional approval of special use permit number PSP 19-061.
Thank you. Before I open the public testimony, anyone like to recuse themselves from this? No? Seeing none, I will open the public testimony. Is anyone to come forward to give testimony on this project, or for, against it? Not seeing any, I will close it and move on to my fellow commissioners for a, either more comments or a motion to approve.
I have a question on, on the hours of operation. It does say on there, the 7:00 to 4:30, and then it says a condition of approval will restrict activities to one-half hour before sunrise and one-half hour after sunset.
That's our standard conditions, but the hours of operation they've suggested is from 7:00 to 4:30. So we tend to go with their, their requested hours, especially if they're more restrictive than our standard conditions of one-half hour before sunrise and one-half hour after sunset.
And it would seem like they would be on Saturdays during...
Again, from their operational statement, you know, and that's why this Planning Commission sometimes asks applicants, do you want to go with our condition, or do you want to go with your own operational statement? We'd like to restrict them to their operational statement.
Okay, as part of my learning process here, agriculture welding establishment, what exactly is that?
Well, the difference, it'd be easiest to explain the difference between a contractor's storage yard and agricultural service establishment. Agricultural service establishments have special privileges in regards to, we can actually do parcel maps on agricultural service establishments to the five-acre max minimum. So what that does is allows them to operate a business that's not 100% agriculture, like welding, without, and get a use permit for that without having to go to a different commercial zoning, so.
But it has to relate to the repair of equipment and maintenance and all that? They can't all of a sudden decide they're going to build roads or whatever on that site?
No, that'd be restricted, again, from their operational statement into agricultural-type uses. We have made exceptions, up to 50%, being agriculture and 50% not, but in this case, this is purely agricultural welding in nature.
Okay, I think, did I open the public testimony?
Did that already?
I did that, okay, thanks for reminding me. I was just, just texting to make sure Wayne is okay. He's had some heart issues, and it's very unusual for him not to show up for a meeting, so I'm checking on that. But at this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve this project, please?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations Sections 15302 pertaining to replacement or reconstruction of existing structures and/or facilities and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP 19-061.
We have a second, please?
I'll second.
Let's reset that, because it shows Gil as the motioned.
It's like, that's magic.
Okay, how's that?
Yes.
Second by John Elliott, roll call, I mean, yes, roll call?
It's done. No, just approved.
It's working.
It's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to take like about a five-minute break, check on Wayne. I want to reconvene the meeting, and we'll have a continued public hearing for item 4A. Phone change, PZC 19-001. Tullari County Short Term Rental Ordinance to establish reasonable and uniform regulations for use of residential dwellings as short-term rentals. A text amendment to ordinance 352, Tullari County zoning ordinance to be added, Chapter 16.7 regarding short-term rentals, continued from October 16, 2019. And we have Chuck, no, we don't have Chuck. Chuck's out there, but we have Mike Washam going to give the staff report.
Thank you, Chairman. Again, today we're here for a continuation of the short-term rental ordinance. Just a little bit of background, I won't go into the details that we did before, but the Board of Supervisors back in February had given direction to pursue creating, developing a short-term rental ordinance with reasonable regulations involved in that. In July of this year, we held a Three Rivers Town Hall where there was a draft presented to a group up there, following up with a workshop before your Planning Commission on September 25. Some revisions were made based on that. We had a public hearing back on October 16, 2019, held a public hearing on the draft ordinance, received presentation from staff, including revisions to the draft ordinance based upon the comments from the PC workshop, and, and opened for, received further testimony. Then the, the, the Planning Commission closed the public testimony portion of the hearing and continued until today to allow the fire department to further revise its conditions regarding fire safety and for further clarification regarding septic systems and the determination of maximum occupancy. So that's really what we're here today to do, is just to look at the fire and septic, and then again, today what we're looking ultimately for is the Planning Commission to, to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So, since we, I guess we are having technical difficulties, so I will read into, oh, one thing to, a couple of clarifications. On the, your packet today, on the staff report, on page 3, just to clarify, down towards the bottom it says three-bedroom house, including maximum occupancy, including children, is 12. That's, that's incorrect, it's really eight plus two minor children under age 12, under the age of 12. And it's a 1,000-gallon tank, not a 900-gallon tank, so I just want to make that clarification. And as well in your packet too, in the, in the draft ordinance itself, provision F22 talked about refers to other sections, and because the fire department has made revisions, that needed to be updated. So where it reference F18, it actually should be saying F21, and where it says F20, it should actually be F23, so I just want to read those in the records.
What page is that on, Mike?
On the, that is in the draft ordinance, that would be on, it's a section F22 would be page nine on the draft ordinance, I believe. Your packet doesn't have that change. The, I have a seri, a set of draft ordinances here that the public can have, that those corrections are already made in that. And again, it's just referencing citation within its own ordinance, it's not really changing anything. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, so the 13 that's up on the screen, and that's pretty much the language that's been updated for the ordinance?
Yeah, and, and this, this update is included in your packet. It was just those couple of references. So the fire department has made further revisions to their fire regulations for the short-term ordinance, and essentially it reads that outdoor fires are only allowed during the months of November, December, January, and February on approved burn days regulated through the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District, and if permitted in writing by the operator and/or property owner shall only be permitted within a designated fire pit in compliance with applicable state and local laws. So that is a significant change over what had previously been there, so I believe this is in accord with what most of the people are looking for. Then it goes on, these other, these minor change, the minor pieces under it, A through, I think, F or J. Outdoor fires are not allowed during quiet hours. Homemade bowls, fire pits shall not be more than three foot in diameter within dirt or protected by a non-combustible surface, surface over the soil with a non-combustible ridged ring or barrier around the fire pit, no less than four inches tall. Fuel within the fire shall not be stacked more than one foot tall. Commercially bought fire pits and wood stoves must be a listed design as, such as those purchased from the retail commercial outlet. Any fires within these acronyms must comply with the safety and design requirements of, and its manufactured instructions. Again, these aren't really changes to what we've had before. The outdoor barbecue equipment must be used in accordance with safety requirements and the manufacturer's instructions. Any permitted open burning shall be constantly attended with, until the fire is extinguished, and fire shall be dead out to be considered extinguished. Burning of wood or materials on the ground is not, in an approved fire pit is strictly prohibited. Fuel for campfires must be clean, dry wood, debris, trash, garbage, processed materials and refuse are prohibited from being burned. Proper clearance of combustibles from the fire bowl or stove shall be maintained and cleared before a fire is kindled. No person shall allow campfire kindled or, or attended by him or her to spread after it's built. Renters shall have rented permission from the owner-operator in possession upon request. That K is an added line that wasn't in the previous drafts. So, then also we have the requirement that wood burning heaters and outdoor burning devices are subject to the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District's Check Before You Burn program and Rule 4901. In addition, all fireworks are prohibited. So the fire changes.
I got a question on that 14 part. You know, normally, because Three Rivers, and here again, you know, are showing an exception to Three Rivers to the rest of the county, you know, when it's a no-burn day at the San Joaquin Valley Pollution Control District, it can still be a burn day in a wood stove in Three Rivers because you don't have another source of heat?
Correct. It, that's why it's, the, the rules and regulations are followed, that there's an exception if the, if it's your sole source of heat, there is an exception. That's true on the valley floor or in the, or in the foothills.
Okay, well, okay, here you're saying that on a burn day, you can't have a fire at a short-term rental. I totally agree, and I'm, I'm really of the mind that maybe you shouldn't have a fire ever at a short-term rental, or any place in Three Rivers during, you know, some of these seasons, but how do you know this when you're staying at a place that it's a burn day or a no-burn day? I, I think there's a, I mean, how's the visitor supposed to know that, what's the difference between a burn day and a non-burn day?
Right. I would, I would suggest that the property manager, as the time of the transition of turning over the keys or that, would be able to provide that information to the occupants.
Well, see a little disconnect there, because a lot of these places are keyless entry, and there's nobody on site when the visitor shows up. And I know that for a fact. And again, here, you know, I like where we're going in this, and I'm, this open fire business, I don't quite understand what that means, and why do we not require a screen in case the stuff, you know, is blown by a gust of wind and there's embers in the fireplace? Why is there not a screen or, you know, a, a device that contains the sparks from the fire? Because that's what's going to be the problem.
I would defer to, I believe Chief Norman is here, and these, these rules and regulations, as we often say, we defer to the experts, and, and these rules and regulations are proposed through the fire department, and so I'd have him best to address whatever concerns you have regarding this.
You know, one thing that would be good is that when we have rented a vacation rental, they always have a list of the rules, and we have an application process that they require to provide with your application a list of the rules, which include some of these things that we're talking about. So they're there, when they get there, they see the rules.
This is all required, that's part of this ordinance. There is, there are, the rules are there, there's information there. There has to be a contact number of the management firm that can be there within 24 hours, so obviously there's communication, potential communication between management and the renter, that's why I'm saying is part of that.
Well, that's already being done now, because it's required on some of the platforms, that you put rules out there before the person even rents.
Right.
But this is more specific, and I want to know about this open fire thing, and maybe Charlie could clarify that a little bit.
I have a question too. In regards to people showing up, you know, without supervision or something like that, maybe we could, in the instructions, notify them that there'll be a flag up on no-burn day or something like that, and it's going to be a red flag or whatever, and if it's, if you see that, that's no-burn day.
What if you don't see it and it is up?
What if you don't see it and it is up?
Well, the thing is, you show up.
If you're not to have a fire on a day you can burn, then they have a fire on a day you can't burn.
Let's let Chief Norman come up, and he's talking staff report, so.
Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioners, county planning staff, county council. This gray beard, it's no-shave November. I didn't just sleep and miss a shaving opportunity, so it may be cut off by Veterans Day the way it's itching. I'm not used to this. In our culture in the fire service, we can't have beards because SCBA masks, so I figured at my level, if I've got to put on an air pack, we're in big, big trouble. Thank you for this opportunity. I think the revisions weren't really, they were kind of hidden in the APCD code. If it were a perfect world, or if it were my world, I would regulate fireworks completely, but then you hit the nonprofits that have a sales period, and I would have no burning absolutely anytime. It just creates so many issues. My concerns are life-environment property. You have a transient occupant that comes from possibly a beach community in Southern California, where they burn things on the sand, and they have no risk of spread. So I'm targeting that idea, so I'm targeting that population. As you look through fire history, and I'll get to specifics, I won't go through a long droning process, but we've had several near misses in Three Rivers. We had the Dineley Fire in 2017 that we caught with some good air support, and it was only a little over 300 acres. We had an escape control bird back in the 80s that almost went through the downtown. We've had some significant incidents, we've had the Horst-Greek Fire in recent history. And I think based on, how many of you attended the event in Paradise? Pretty good?
Four of us.
Chico.
Okay, in Chico. So I think looking at that, you look at what we have, we don't have quite a mid-slope town like we did in Paradise up there. That would be more like Alpine in Southern Tulare County. You look at 100-year fire history, even a 20-year fire history of Paradise, and you have had 13 fires in there that exceeded 10,000 acres since 1999, as young firefighter rose on the Bloomer Fire in 1999. And you look at the catch on that, not eliminating starts, but you have, okay, they caught this fire at 7,500 acres. Okay, they caught this fire at 30,000 acres from Lake Orville. They caught this at 25,000 acres. They just didn't catch this fire. So with that being said, you always want to be in the prevention mode. It's, in summer of 2018, we lost eight firefighters from June to September on various wildland incidents, from falling trees, from burnovers. The cost of suppression of just the Paradise Fire alone, the campfire, was $150 million. Lost infrastructure was $16.5 billion. So we're trying to prevent that at the lowest level, and I know I'm getting back to point here, but that's why my concerns. If we could regulate it, I think with the relative humidity levels from November, December, January, and February, I think we're in good shape with low temperatures and high relative humidity. Fuel moisture, is it even if you get some late burning in the afternoon, you're not going to have the spread, you're going to be able to catch it. So that gives people the draw in the ambiance of the short-term rentals, and it protects all of the Three Rivers local residents. So as far as a screen over campfire, we could put that stipulation in it. With that embers, with the fuel travel, if everybody follows that, I think we're in pretty good shape.
You know, the reason why I bring that up is all the, you know, the big box stores sell the portable fireplaces, and they all have a screen, and you build the fire inside that. To me, that, if you want to sit around the fire at night, on a cold night, I don't, to me, I don't see a problem in that, because that's a safe device to have a fire. But an open fire in the back of a neighborhood that's, trees growing all around it, and leaves falling from the fall, I think that that's recipe for asking for trouble.
Okay.
And I really think we need to confine those fires inside a device. And I know, and you know, in the run that we staged out at Lake Hoya in December, December 7th, we put those out there, and people warm around them, and they're safe devices, so fires don't spread. And the Army Corps asked us to do that, and we willingly complied, and I think it's a good opportunity to do it here, too.
Okay. And I think the enforcement process of this may be a challenge over the first couple of years, but I think once we establish a culture and put that into, you know, whether it's a laminate eight-and-a-half by 11 for the rental agreement to where they have the Air Pollution Control District contacts at local fire station, as well as fire department contacts, I think we're trying to create the elimination of every possible loophole.
Charlie, do you have the staff to enforce this?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's good.
No, that's good.
Thank you.
Good job.
I would just add that condition 14 about the check before you burn, that is, that is nothing unique to short-term rentals. That's just a standard thing, we're just identifying it and putting it out there. So I know there may be challenges, but that's just the current law anyway.
Yeah, it applies to everybody.
Right, exactly.
And on 21F, do we want to change that to 10:00 PM?
21F.
It says notifications that renters shall observe quiet hours between 10:00 AM and 8:00 AM.
Oh, just to add?
Yeah, unless we're asking them to be silent for 26 hours in a row. That'd be fine, but, you know. So on page 8/13, so I guess it's 13 of the revised version.
Oh, 10. 10, oh, okay, all right, I see the mistake, yes. All right, yeah, so noted.
Okay.
All right, that, then concerning, concerns were raised regarding the septic systems, about allowing occupancy exceeding septic system capacity regarding new additions and commercial conversions to residential units, and self-determination, allowing owners to determine the maximum occupancy. Just to clarify that, it's a responsibility of the Environmental Health Division to determine the appropriate design and capacity of septic systems. That's our experts, that's who monitors and approves, reviews and approves septic design. Additions, including bedrooms and commercial conversions that are permitted through the county, are reviewed and approved by and through the Environmental Health Division. This includes analyzing the existing septic system to determine if it's appropriately sized, has the capacity in the design to handle whatever the new use is or expanded use. So again, that goes through the Environmental Health Division. And again, this short-term rental ordinance is not written as a self-inspection or self-determination that would allow owners to determine the max occupancy for the short-term rentals. It never has been. I don't know, when people often, somehow they were confused, or they think that they can determine how many bedrooms. No, this has always been, through environmental health determines the size of septic, that's the way it is. If there's been an illegal addition, if we learn about it, then we'll be able to enforce it. But if there's no, if they never came in for permits, we can't say that, you know, we can't have an ordinance to, towards illegal conversions or illegal additions. I mean, they're illegal by definition, and they're out of compliance, so. Just to start with that, so Environmental Health Division, they oversee the septic systems throughout the county, and they, we have just recently adopted a local area management plan, or otherwise known as LAMP, and that's for onsite wastewater treatment systems. That was approved through the state and the Central Valley Regional Water Control Board. That, again, Environmental Health Division has regulatory responsibility over review and approval of septic systems of less than 3,500-gallon daily flow. So all of what we're talking about is significantly lower than that. So the authority, the responsibility lies within the Environmental Health Division of the county. They review the septic design, capacity of septic tanks, percolation testing, location, alternative type systems, et cetera. It all goes through our Environmental Health Division. So pursuant to Section 200 of the LAMP regarding septic tanks, Environmental Health Division completes this evaluation on the number of permitted bedrooms. Again, there was people that were standing up saying, "This is the way you do it," or "This is the way you do it," now, "This is the way we do it." We've included the LAMP, the adopted LAMP, within your packet. It's, I don't know how many pages, but it's part of your packet. So with that said, the initial tank capacity is oversized to accommodate additional guests or unforeseen circumstances. We'll talk about that a little bit later, but right off the bat, there's extra capacity in there for guests, for other things. According to the EPA Wastewater Treatment Systems Manual report back in 2002, the average wastewater flow per person is estimated to be between 50 and 70 gallons per day for residential units for those who built before 1994. The same report also states that the homes built after 2070, or 2007 typically use less water, and the average flow of 40 to 60 gallons per person per day. So that's kind of what you're looking at, and our county is, I believe it's 150 extra gallons or more per day, or sizing capacity for each bedroom. So this is the LAMP, and I've added a third column. These are the tank sizes for my bedroom, and then the last column is showing how many overnight stays can be accommodated. So again, for one- and two-bedroom houses, they start with 750 gallons, and our short-term rental ordinance would allow six adults overnights, all the way up through three-bedrooms, 1,000 gallons, so that's 250 gallons more for that bedroom. Four-bedrooms is up to 1,200, five-bedrooms is up to 1,500 gallons, and then it continues on. However, we have a max in this ordinance of 12 adults at maximum capacity for any, regardless of what size the structure is or the house is. So I think that that will, if there's any questions, if you have any questions regarding that, that's, I think that clarifies that. I'd just like to commend the planning commissioner for the process that this has taken. We've had the workshops, we've had multiple meetings, we've gone through, I can highlight a few of the changes that have happened due to this process. We've increased the noticing of surrounding property owners. Originally, it was proposed to be a 300-foot noticing, we've increased that to 500-foot through this process. We've clarified the minimal rental period being overnight, not specific to, you know, we're, again, trying to keep it so it's not rented by hours, but at least a minimum of an overnight stay. I know it says, it says as a mit, with no maximum. It goes without saying, because this is 30 days or less, there is no maximum. We can strike the no maximum, or we can leave it there, it has no difference to the ordinance whatsoever. Limited signage on the front yard to 24 by 24, just talking about the property management We've, there was a robust discussion about trash bins and keeping them from public view, and your commissioners seemed to think that because of the circumstances, especially in Three Rivers, that it wasn't needed to have them out of view because of the long driveways and all of that. So we made that revision based on your, we've got more robust fire conditions now, and we will further that by, before going to the board, we'll add the screening, whatever wording that the fire department wants to put in there regarding screening. Pets, there was a discussion about, well, how come, how come you're controlling pets on rental properties and not, well, you're not doing, again, we're not doing anything different than any other property. Animal, our county code 4-073300 is animal nuisances, which regulates keeping pets contained on your property, as well as continuous barking or making noise and all that stuff. So that, again, is nothing unique to these, this is, every house has to do this, but we want to put this and identify them upfront, so it's easy to understand the conditions that they have to abide by, even though those are already standard conditions to any household as far as dogs go. Added, well, we added the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, number 14, which we mentioned about, which is a standard requirement anyway for every property owner, but we just put it out there so to proactively make sure that everybody understands that that regulation is out there. And we added some, if the property owner allows smokers, we require that they have the fire-safe ashtrays to be provided. That was something that was brought in subsequent to the beginning of this process. Talked about water conservation and safety pamphlets and brochures that need to be there as far as the rules that will be posted near the front door or elsewhere, so the renters understand what the process is. So I really want to compliment the planning commission on this process, and if there's no other further questions or anything, I would recommend that the planning commission make a recommendation to approve the draft with the change of adding some screening on the fire to the Board of Supervisors. And then at that process, then there'll be another public hearing of the supervisors.
So are we still, the public hearing still continued from the last?
Well, they closed the public testimony portion of it specifically to come back just to get clarification on septic and fire.
I have a letter that was submitted from the member of the public. Can I give it to you?
Sure.
A couple of questions that I, you know, we're absolutely come a long way in this, and we're, there's some new developments in the last week that shed different light on this. One of them is the shooting in Arinda that occurred this week. I was at Airbnb rental in the town of Arinda. Over 100 people showed up for a party there, and someone was shot at the party. Now, I'm not saying that that could happen in Three Rivers, but we're certainly setting this up to the situation where we can't control situations like that, because we don't have active law enforcement out there, especially in the nighttime. So I'm thinking that this is a, well, let me give you a little bit broader context on this. Now, I covered news stories for the past 25 years in Three Rivers. We never had a murder or anything until five years ago, and a couple of people showed up from the valley along the river. They didn't like each other, they had a shootout, and people died there. This is the kind of thing that we're seeing in some of the properties in Three Rivers, that people show up, and it's a huge amount of people, and it's not the people that are renting the place, but it's the guests. So I have a problem getting behind this when we treat every property, short-term rental, exactly the same, because, and I think there's a letter here that points this out really well, and that there's three distinct types just in Three Rivers. And the thing that bothers me the most about the ordinance, and I said this from the beginning of this, there should be one for Three Rivers, because that's a concentration, and there should be one for the county. To make this a blanket ordinance, I think we're missing the boat here in terms of the situations, let's say in Cherokee Oaks, are a lot different than the situations in other outlawing parts, like where we were looking at last week in the South Fork. Those situations are entirely different for the kind of people that come out there and rent, and the people that own those properties. So there seems to be something we have to do to delineate a hierarchy of different uses here, because this kind of thing with a large house that caters to 12 people in it, this could become a party house, and we've had reports of those. I haven't seen any of those personally myself in Three Rivers, but I've heard stories from different people in Three Rivers that this exists. And like a good friend of mine, he offered his place on the Queer River last year for a Thanksgiving get-together of a family. They rented the property one night, they had a beautiful Thanksgiving dinner, and when the Thanksgiving dinner was over, they all got up and left, and didn't move a dish or anything, and left that for the period of the rental with the turkey still sitting on the table. Now, there's no way to actually prevent all that, so I think what the county needs to do here, we need to have something given back to the community, so there's active law enforcement in the nighttime hours. And it doesn't have to be 12 months a year, but it really needs to be in the busiest times, where we have to have another deputy or something. And the other place I see this whole thing breaks down is, we're going to approve this without knowing what the inspection process is, or how much it's going to cost. And that's the thing I hear from Three Rivers constituents the most, is that how's the county going to inspect these properties? Number one, to make sure the septic's are in compliance, that's one concern, but also that they haven't added bedrooms, you know, since the septic was approved in the first place. So how do we do that? I really think that this I, I really think that this is almost right there, but the county needs to give back a little bit more on this in terms of adding extra law enforcement capability because if we call a deputy in Three Rivers at night, it's 55 minutes response time and that's just the average. A lot of times they say if it's not life-threatening, we'll come out in the morning and check out the situation. So we really have a disconnect when we're bringing all these people here that create a different public safety situation, but we still have the old resident deputy thing who's only on duty, you know, five, eight hour shifts or four, 10 hours or whatever it is. But we, I think in order to pass this ordinance, I think number one, we need to clarify the inspection process so that we know what that is and how that's going to work and we need to know how much the board is going to approve, that that's going to cost because that's a huge issue among the owners and they're willing to go along and accept, I think, the majority of these regulations, but we're, we're just trusting the process to take care of the unknowns. And I really think we would sell this and get a lot more compliance with spelling it out and making it more specific. And we've done that on the fire, I think that's great, I think we're moving in that direction and I think we need to do it on the inspection process and how much is the fee going to be? And if the county feels that the fee shouldn't come out of the TOT, then I think that they need to spell that out before the ordinance is passed unless they're willing to take it out of the TOT or come up with some kind of compromise here. I, I, I really do, I think that the, this is an important ordinance for the future of the county. And like on the trash thing, I see a problem on the trash because it, because we were going to try to require the short-term rentals to put their trash away and not leave it on the street and I can tell you the majority of them leave it on the street, it's there all the time. I don't really have a problem with that, but now it's bear season and the bears are coming down from Washburn Cove in the South Fork and they're upsetting all those cans that are just sitting out there. So what, as a community, one thing that's been proposed in Three Rivers is let's provide all those people with bear proofing on the cans and they're willing to do it for free, but it's not spelled out that they need to do it.
Yeah.
And the local residents know that and they're, you know, we have 40% of all the cans locked up in Three Rivers right now, bear proof, but we do not have 40% of the short-term rental cans locked up because they're not being checked. They just leave them out there days on end and sooner or later, they're going to be upset by bears. So I think we need a little more specificity on the trash and I'm okay with not putting it out of sight, I don't have a problem with that, but I'm not okay with it not being bear proofed. I don't think that's, that's not fair to the bears and it's certainly not fair to the people that live in Three Rivers because they want to be on an interface with wildlife. And so I got a problem with that part of it. I think that planning could come back in maybe the next meeting and tell us how this inspection process is going to work and what it's going to cost and I really don't think that's too much to ask, especially if you're going to take this ordinance and apply it to the whole county where you have a mixed bag of tricks in every situation you're in. There's somebody living out in the middle of Yokal Valley and they're renting their place out or, or in Springville and it's not the same situation in Cherokee Oaks where you have neighbors on both sides, they got to get kids up in the morning at 8:00 AM and they want to send them off to school. It just, it's, you know, it's, it's too much of a catch-all here. So I think we need to look at that and at the very least, we need to define the inspection, how that's going to work and what it's going to cost. I think we owe that to the, you know, the, the residents who are actually the short-term rental thing right now, it's fueling the economy in Three Rivers. This time of year, we're normally dead out there until Thanksgiving, but right now, we have a busy weekend and all these businesses, we have a brand-new hotel, as you know, looking at Three Rivers to expand there because the visitors are there and I think we just need to make this ordinance a little more specific before we actually pass it.
So I think we need to move along. I'd like to make a quick statement for those of you who are not familiar with the planning commission. The planning commission is a sounding board for the supervisors, we don't make laws. So the recommendation that we make today goes to the board and there's a whole new hearing process and they make the laws. We just, in some things, we enforce existing laws, but for the, on this sort of thing, we make a recommendation to the board and so there's a whole nother opportunity for you to come to the board of supervisors and express your opinions. And I'm not sure if I'm opening the public hearing or not today, I'm not.
Through the chair, no.
And so just to let you know, your voice is being heard, but it will, your next step is to go to the board and you can check with our staff to see when they anticipate that supervisor's meeting is. So at this time, I'm going to look for a motion from my fellow supervisors.
Commissioner.
Commissioners, I'm sorry, commissioners.
You got promoted.
I got a god complex today maybe, but my fellow commissioners to approve or disapprove this. So someone like to make an emotion, please?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we continue it, one more date certain and come back with a little more specifics.
Before you make any motions, may I respond to some of your comments?
Sure.
Okay. It does say, it has to be animal-proof trash enclosures, so that's included in here. When you talk about parties, huge parties, this is part of this, maximum off-site visitors coming onsite is six maximum. The event you're talking about, there was, it was a huge thing. This is what this ordinance is meant to try to, try to map in.
I understand that.
So when you talk about how people leave the interior of the thing, there's no way for us to regulate that. When you say the, the condition, the time where you made a reference that someone in Cherokee Oaks, are you saying this is, this quiet zone time between 10 and 8 is, it needs to be stricter than that?
Well, no, I, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just saying there are differences because of the uses of the property. Like for instance, what Arinda is proposing after that incident they had is to have an onsite person at all times on all their short-term rentals. Now, I'm not saying, but we have to have a deputy we can call, we don't have that. So if you're putting the burden on us as neighbors to pick up the phone and say, hey, there's a big party there, it's 11 o'clock, we'll call the sheriff's department, that's an hour before they're going to show up. I don't think that that gets at the point of this. And the thing about sending it to the board of supervisors, I don't have a problem with that, but there's no one on the board that understands what's going on in the area with the highest concentration of these rentals. And this, it's, it's maybe not out in Merton Valley or it's maybe not out in Elderwood, but the problem is in Three Rivers and we're not doing anything in this ordinance to address that.
I, I would argue that, that I think there's a lot of conditions in there regarding fires, regarding other things.
The fires is good.
How long ways, bear, or animal-proof trash as an example. I think there's been a robust discussion on this and I, I believe as staff perspective that this does place a lot of improvements of what the situations that you're, you're contending are going on there, I think this does, goes a long ways to that. And again, the direction from the board was to have reasonable conditions put on here and having someone onsite at every place would seem extreme.
It, it all sounds good on paper and I totally agree with most of it. I just don't, I, I don't see the inspection process.
Well, okay, yeah, to further on that, the inspection process is, we, and we've told this in every meeting, we are not going to go out and pump septic tanks, we are relying on environmental health for permitted so they know when they permitted a, a structure based on the number of bedrooms, we're not inspecting the system. Now, if there's been complaints or there's been reports of fail, septic failure, obviously there'd be more robust there, but we are not going onsite and inspecting septic systems. We're, we're relying on.
But would they, would they pull a permit and then look at how many bedrooms?
Yes, absolutely, that's the process we go by. That's why the determination is based on permitted bedrooms. A permitted bedroom is one that has a building permit, environmental health has reviewed it, building permit. So if, if this goes back into the, like a house built in the early 90s or 80s or whenever, if it was a permitted, we're going off the permits, how much that, if they've done illegal additions subsequent to that, then tho, those will be found out during this process. Also, the definition of a bedroom is very well-defined and it's part, it's a permitted bedroom, so it's, people can't just say this hallway here sleeps this or this. We have a restrictions based on the number of permitted bedrooms and that will be the process that we'll be going through, the investigation and, and processing these applications.
One of the things that I'm glad to see in this draft that has changed from the other ones is that some of the responsibility still is on the owners of the property because we can't say must put one foot in front of the other to, and regulate every single step that a person takes. So on the septic tanks, I'm seeing, as far as I'm reading it, that we're going to, you know, trust this permit process and, and, you know, whatever the bedrooms were permitted, that's going to determine the occupancy and if there's a failure of the tank at that point, then the owner is going to be held responsible for that failure. So they're going to have some sort of incentive to watch how many people they have there.
Exactly.
Because without that, you know, I mean, they're facing a big bill if they have to repair all this.
And what's it, what's it going to cost the owner of the property to do?
Well, the board of supervisors will be determining that, we've put out estimates around $500 is what we're estimating. There's a, we have to go through that process and that will be up to the board whether they get full cost recovery on it or not, that's, it's, it's a cost recovery issue. So again, if, if we were to go out and do inspections independently on each septic system, the cost of this would be horrendously high. We're trying to rely on building permits that have been issued and, and that so it can be a more streamlined process in-house. Our, our, I don't have the exact dollar amount, but our administrative use permits run around $1,000 normally, but we also have a temporary administrative, temporary for event use permit that runs five, five something, that's probably what we're going to recommend because we're going to try to streamline this process the best we can. But again, that's ultimately up to the board of supervisors to determine fees.
As your temporary chair, I think we should move ahead on this and so once again, I'm going to ask for a, a motion from my fellow commissioners on this proposed ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of a categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15061B3, common sense exemption and recommend approval of an amendment to the ordinance number 352, Tulare County zoning ordinance to add Chapter 16.7 regarding the short-term rentals, including changes to the fire pit screens and, there's one more.
The AM, PM, the correction.
10:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
The second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, roll, uh, roll call.
Or push the button?
Push the button.
We have four, one abstain, so. Motion is carried, but I'm curious, you can only abstain.
No, abstain means you have no opinion either way.
Either way.
I'm not, I'm not voicing my yes and I'm not voicing my no.
Okay, then that's okay, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, the, the positive side to this is there is no ordinance and then like we have seen, once we have ordinances, we begin to have some control over the situation. And I think our board is capable of making that decision and we can give further input, John, to the board. So now we move on to the director's report.
Through the chair, that closes the matter.
I was wondering if the people might be able to have a little say in this rather than just government employees.
Public testimony has been closed, sir, I'm sorry.
Is that right?
That's a fact. Please sit down or I'll have you removed.
How did you guys determine that you were closing the public?
Would you please sit down?
I'm sorry?
Would you please sit down?
No, I want to know, I want to know, how, how did you have the ability to close this discussion to the public?
I just asked the sheriff to come in and I asked you to please sit down or leave the room, thank you.
Well, you want to know something? I'm putting you guys all on notice, you don't have authority to pass an ordinance to force obligations on the private people, okay?
Is that a threat, is that your threat?
No, no, I'm just telling you, that's a fact and that's why you guys can't prove it. I've been asking all of you guys, him especially.
Please sit down. I'm feeling a little intimidated.
What, what your authority is to pass this obligation and nobody, and nobody can.
Please sit down.
Please, please sit down, sir.
Please sit down.
This is a kangaroo court, I don't need to even watch you guys.
We didn't pass the ordinance. We made a recommendation.
There, there was a letter given to us and it's addressed to the supervisors, do we need to turn it back in?
You can keep it or turn it back in, I'm sure Belma will pass it along to Mr. Washam and I'm sure that'll go to Chuck Pilzlebelsky and I'm sure it'll make its way into the record in front of the board of supervisors at the board of supervisors on November 19th. Through the chair, moving forward to the director's report.
Yes, continue.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Losing our highest law enforcement officer here, the chief, fire chief.
Get busy, Charlie.
Moving along for the director's report, we are moving forward on Lemon Cove project committee plan. We had a meeting yesterday at the sanitation district, we're trying to work out some of the details on their water provisions that they.
Just stop for just a second, before our staff person leaves, I would like to file a report, so would you have a sheriff see me because I felt intimidated? Thank you. Continue.
Yes, duly noted. So the, yeah, we were in Lemon Cove yesterday, we have another meeting on Thursday night in Lemon Cove with the school district and hopefully that'll wrap up the community planning process with Lemon Cove and we are hoping to move forward to this planning commission in December with their project. It's a great opportunity to tie up some loose ends with the fire, with the fire flows to the school and the wells and the sanitation district out there, so we look forward to that. We are also continuing to work on Cutler Rossi and we haven't had any meetings lately this last three weeks, that's lately, but we probably will have a few more meetings come December and into the early spring and then hopefully we'll get the community plan in front of this planning commission, hopefully later spring or June. And that outside of Springville would wrap up our communities that we are looking at with urban development boundaries. The other thing we are really starting to look at and work on is the board did move forward on the GPI's for a general plan amendment to look at different aspects, sigma safety and look at the expansion of the urban development boundaries to Kingsburg and Delano. As part of our SB2 application, they've asked us more recently to kind of signify how many acres that represents and that would represent approximately 600 more acres of residential, 600 more acres of commercial development. So hopefully those are opportunities around the cities and so we will begin that effort in earnest, especially with the city of Kingsburg, we're, do have a contract with them to do their area plan. So we will be looking to, to do that come this next month, start outreach in Kingsburg area to work with them jointly for that. So that's a big opportunity for this county and I think we'll see other, hopefully we'll see other efforts like that with the cities of Exeter and Lindsay as we look to the areas around those communities to, who do have access to infrastructure to do development and consistently with the, with the counties and the cities. So those are the big, bigger efforts where we are going to focus ourselves on. And with that, I'll turn it over to Hector Garrett to talk about the environmental documents he's working on currently.
We have a couple of environmental documents that we're working on.
This Friday, we plan on releasing a mitigated neck deck document for the Lemon Cove community plan. Uh... for the Lemon Cove community plan. Next week, we plan on releasing an environmental impact report for the Deer Creek Mine Expansion. And the week after that, we plan on releasing an environmental impact report for the Dunn Asphalt Project, Asphalt and Concrete Batch Plant. So we're keeping busy. We're doing our regular NOEs and other smaller projects for public works and then obviously reviewing everything that the project processing division's moving forward. So we're active. Thank you. Oh, and then two weeks ago, we released a subdivision, a 400-unit subdivision mitigated neck deck for the Goshen area.
400?
Forty-five units.
That'll be coming before the planning commission in December for Smee Homes. It's within the area to the west of 99 along 64 where we rezoned quite a bit of property to mixed-use zoning. So the first group kind of taking advantage of that. We hope to see more development, especially as we sense we're at some kind of height of the market. And we'll see how long it lasts. Got some brokers up here could tell me otherwise. But, but residential's doing really, really well right now. And some of our policies we put in place to streamline the process would hopefully come to fruition in a case like this. We are seeing a lot of activity in Goshen right on 67 and Betty Drive, all three corners with Lucky, with JR transferred to West Coast Construction and with the property across the street for Western Milling. They're all moving forward with development proposals. So we're seeing a lot of activity where there is infrastructure and including discussions in early March where we're trying to work with the utility district and the, well, the PD. And their engineer to find out ways to get infrastructure to the community. Because the grant, granting process, you know, takes two to five years to actually get to construction, a lot of these things. So where we do have infrastructure, we like to take full advantage of it. And I know the tentative map that was reviewed by this planning commission for Strathmore for D.R. Horton, again, it's tough, tough getting water to that project. So they've hired an attorney to help, but we haven't really seen any movement on that. So it would be, it would be nice.
Same engineer.
The same engineer, always the same engineer. But you know, I mean, as far as Cutler Rossi, I think, you know, he's very helpful getting that process for self-help, that 37 lot subdivision that we approved here. That, that's moving forward all the way to final map, hopefully coming December. So, but again, you know, these one-offs at 37 lots or, you know, even like Kingsburg where you have potentially 200, but we're, you know, doing, barely gotten to 12 building permits on that so far. You know, they're, they're turning dirt on Sequoia Gateway to get backbone. But again, that's not residential and that's going to be commercial. But, you know, if we put 20,000 square feet in this year, you know, we'd be lucky. So again, just as a drive to meet our arena numbers and the expectations from the state while still trying to, and you do want to get as many units in right now before some of the other policies like sigma and the adaptation and climate strategies for the foothills and some of those things hit, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be encumbered even more. And yesterday, the board approved the code change to the building code, you know, which requires solar. And so that's, that's a little bit of hit to residential development, too. And we'll, we'll do what we can in that regard. But you know, there's, there's a lot of things facing housing right now. It's making it definitely more difficult. And even more so when you don't have infrastructure. So it's kind of incumbent upon us to push, push these projects while we can through and then change our general plan to help pre-mitigate some of the constraints that are going to be enforced upon the building industry in the future.
And on a personal, professional note, Monday, I celebrated my 35th year in the planning profession. How about that? Thank you. And just to tell you how much SEQA and planning has evolved way back in the day, in like 1990, when we did the Strathmore Community Plan, which I was the project manager for that. The environmental impact report for that entire community plan, including response to comments and comment letters, was 21 pages.
Oh, my God.
Please do another thing. I'd like to.
It wasn't me, my hands are here.
I wanted to commend Mike Washam and Chuck Pilselbelski for working on the probably what is the biggest ordinance change in this county in the last decade. You know, I know the Assemblage was out there for a reason to kind of control the party barns a little bit. And, you know, it's, I know we don't necessarily like one size fits all, but I think there was a lot of comments from the Three Rivers folks that Chuck and Mike changed and clarified and did everything in their power to accommodate. So I think at this point, you know, that ordinance as it stands is probably one of our best, best piece of work that we've done in a long time regarding our zoning code. So again, I hope that's just the beginning of what we're going to do with our zoning code over the next two years. And we will receive some money from SB2 to update our zoning code to make it more, more up to speed with what's happened in society since 1978. So we are looking forward to that. So again, this is a great start, but I think we'll see a few more efforts like this over the next, next couple of years.
Who was that person here filming everything?
That was from Three Rivers.
Yeah, they're allowed to.
Yeah. His name's Ethan Paggi. And also I wanted to say it was interesting that we experienced a little of the red alert situation because that's how we film Three Rivers all the time. We call the sheriff's department and they don't show.
We had Chief Norman who would have tackled him.
No, he was off the door.
Yeah.
They came back, they came back. Okay, okay, I would have tackled him for you.
Yeah. When do we install the metal detector in here?
I don't think that, I don't think that gentleman necessarily warrants that. But in, if you, you did feel threatened, I'm glad you did note that. And I'm sure that'll be presented to the sheriff's department. And I think if that gentleman does show up again at the Board of Supervisors, we will be on a little bit higher alert.
He probably will.
We have no doubt that he will.
There's no further business. I don't know where we can is. Well, meeting.
Page turn.
Thank you.
We can go home early. I almost wanted to say when you were saying you're looking forward to more ordinances, if you want.
That guy's a scary son of a bitch because he's got it gone or what.